Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This is June 6, 2017. We have all seven members of the Planning Commission present, so we have a full quorum. And we're grateful for our staff who are here tonight, who I think outnumber the Planning Commission here. So we've got some great city staff, and we're grateful for city residents and applicants coming out to participate in the public process. We're grateful for June Davis taking notes for us. We have one item on our consent calendar this evening, approval of minutes from our previous meeting of May 16, 2017. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Commissioner Quinney.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Sikoski, and a second from Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion with the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Our first public hearing this evening is Krav Maga Reborn, 1669 West, 9,000 South, a conditional use permit for personal instruction service in a PC zone. Krav Maga Reborn, Zach Evans is the applicant. Is he present this evening?
Yeah.
Please come forward, sir, and present your application. Thank you.
My name's Brent Gibbons. This is Zach Evans. We are the owners of Krav Maga Reborn. And just a little history of Krav Maga. Krav Maga was started by a man back in the '30s and '40s who was watching his friends get beat up by groups of thugs that later became known as the Nazis. Very, you guys know what happened in history, but during this time, he found out that his boxing career, his wrestling, his circus career did nothing to help against people with sticks, knives, all sorts of weapons. And so he created a system called Krav Maga. It's 100% self-defense, and it's a way to protect yourself from people that attack you. His saying was, "So that one may walk in peace." Zach and I have been teaching almost 10 years together now, and we recently opened up a school. It was four years ago. We started in Sandy, then we moved to West, or West, South Jordan, because we were growing, and we've grown out of our place in South Jordan, and we would like to take over this spot and turn it into a Krav Maga, a place where we can teach families and friends how to defend themselves. We've done lots of community service as far as carjacking events, anti-bullying, women's seminars, and we do a lot of community service as far as offering that free to our community. So anything you'd like to add?
Well, thank you. Carjacking, that's usually illegal.
Yes, we, anyone who's anti-carjack, you're not allowed to carjack. Just to clarify, we don't teach people to carjack.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll reserve some time for you if there's anything you'd like to add after the public comments section.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. And for the city, Mr. Forsythe has this item, correct?
Correct. Thank you, Chairman. So I think the applicant for doing a good job of describing what they'll be doing there. So I'll just kind of go over the planning points and findings and some of the other facts of the business. So Krav Maga Reborn will be located in the Riverpoint Plaza, which is just on the corner of Redwood Road and 900 South. So within that shopping center, there'll actually be the only martial arts studio within that center. So from a planning standpoint, we feel that that'll be a good mix of uses and will help to, will help out that shopping center. So the hours of operations will be Monday through Thursday from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then on the weekends from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And class sizes will be anywhere from 10 to 20 students, ranging from young kids to older adults. So as you can see here on the aerial map, this area is pretty much surrounded by a large concentration of commercial uses, commercial uses in zones, and with the nearest residential area just being that, it's kind of hard to see on the map there, but kind of that green patch in the southwest corner of that map, that, which is about over 600 feet away. So this really shouldn't generate any impact on any residences or some of those low-impact uses. So as for the specific businesses around there, to the north, you've got a Carl's Jr. To the east is the Asian City Building. To the west, just across Redwood Road is Chase Bank, and to the south is the East Capital So the interior of the lease base, they've got a total of 1,500 square feet of gross floor area. It's kind of hard to tell on the drawing here, just with the text size, but that northern section is the main entrance, and that'll be used primarily as a reception center and for some minor retail sales for merchandise, accessories, things of that nature. And then the training area will be about 1,100 square feet of space with a small restroom at the back, so we feel that's sufficient to accommodate class sizes of 10 to 20 people. So as far as the traffic and parking, as you can see here on the map, the main vehicular entrance to Riverpoint Plaza is just right there, off of Redwood Road, just runs right in front of Krav Maga Reborn. So that main driveway is actually wide enough. You can see here there's space to accommodate a drop-off area outside of that main drive aisle. And with that being 78 feet, according to city stacking standards, it can accommodate a total of four cars in there without interfering with either that main drive aisle or the drive aisle to the west. So that, that has actually been included as a condition of approval with the permit. And then other features for the drop-off include a 20-foot-wide sidewalk, which is ideal for some of these drop-off situations, so that you don't have occasional conflicts with cross-pedestrian traffic or things like that. Now, the city parking standards for personal instruction services, they require one space for every 200 feet of gross floor area. So based on the amount of space they have, a total of eight parking spaces are required. So we conducted a study on the total amount of required parking based on the businesses in that, on that same parcel. So that parcel has 71 parking spaces, and the amount of required parking is also 71. So they just barely meet the parking standards. However, Agent City, they, they have a very extensive parking lot, and we calculated that they actually have an excess of 30 spaces. So in the event that there is excessive parking needs, Agent City will be more than adequate to meet those. So based on these findings and those explained in the staff report, the staff is recommending that the Planning Commission grant approval of the conditional use permit for Krav Maga Reborn, located at 1669 West, 9,000 South, with the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Forsythe. Let's ask some questions from the Commission to staff. Commissioner Green.
So I've got a couple of questions. First question, did we get the application corrected? I talked to Mr. Lane for a week ago when we were at our combined workshop, and it shows that the property owner on the application is Tom Williamson, but it's really an LLC that owns the property. So I just want to make sure we got that corrected.
Yeah, I have, I have the property owner affidavit right here. But yeah, it does say Tom Williamson is, is on that affidavit. I've been in contact with the property managers at Riverpoint Plaza. They've been in contact with property owners, and it seems like they're in sympathetic hopes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we've got the technical requirement in that as well. Is that, my other question is, is that drop, drop-off aisle going to affect games, it's not going to affect GameStop in any way, is it? Because there's no parking spots in front of GameSpot now.
Correct, yeah. That, that area is not designated as a parking space, just simply a drop-off aisle out of that main drive aisle area.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks again, Mr. Forsythe. This has been noted as a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please feel welcome to come to the podium. You'll have three minutes to mention your thoughts. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion leading to a possible motion. Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say thank you for coming to West Jordan. I've got a couple of neighbors whose kids are in your classes, and they've, they've been enjoying it, so I don't, they're definitely in support of this as well, so thank you for coming to West Jordan.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Quinney.
I will make a motion then. Based on the positive findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for Krav Maga Reborn located at 1669 West, 9,000 South, number 1719 in the PC zoning district, with the conditions of approval listed on pages six and seven in the staff report.
Commissioner Luther.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Luther. Is there any discussion with the motion? Commissioner Green.
I would like to offer an amendment that we add, condition 10, that requires the appropriate property owner affidavit from the property owner listed on the county recorder's books, so that the complete application is complete.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney, are you amenable to that friendly amendment?
Yeah, that's fine.
And Commissioner Luther, would you like to second that, still?
Second.
Great, thank you. So we have the amendment to the motion, accepted by Commissioner Quinney, seconded by Commissioner Luther. Any discussion to that amended motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Welcome to West Jordan. Thank you for doing business.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I'd like to bring it to, to the Commission, seeing if we can have a unanimous consent item, to move item number six on the agenda up to the present, seeing as how there might be a conflict of a double booking with Mr. Murray with a meeting that he might need to attend across the hallway. Is there any opposition to that? Great, thank you. Let's jump down to item number six then, please. A text amendment to amend the West Jordan 2009 City Code, Section 13-5J-10, Development Plans with Citywide applicability. City of West Jordan is the applicant. This is a application generated between staff and council, and Mr. Murray is presenting this item.
Okay, so this, let's see if I have my mic. So this is a, as you mentioned, a text amendment to our ordinance.
Mr. Murray, just one moment, please. We'll give you a microphone that, that work. Great, thank you.
So this, this is a city-generated text amendment. The city staff, as well as the city council, are putting this before the Planning Commission. This particular text amendment is citywide applicability, and it deals with development plans. So when a developer comes in with a development plan for a development and subsequently would like to amend his development plan, then there's currently a section in our ordinance that indicates how we deal with changes or variations within that amended development plan. The concern that staff and council have had over time is there, there needed to be a few more standards as to what was a minor variation versus what's not a minor variation. The reason that's important is if it's a minor variation, then the council has let city staff, mainly the zoning administrator, make those decisions as to whether those variations are allowed or approved. If they're more than minor variations, if they're significant in any way, then those do need to come back through the Planning Commission and council. And so the, what they, they've done then in this subsection five that's proposed, is there are six different criteria identified A through F, that if those are all met, then the zoning administrator is entitled to declare that it's a minor variation, and he has the authority to approve of it. If however, those, there are items that are not met on that list, and it's not a minor variation, it would come back through the Planning Commission and council. And those types of items there are if the heights are the same or lower of buildings, if all the footprints and setbacks and other city requirements are still met, if there's the same or fewer residential units, if there's the same or more office space, if there's the same or more improvements in amenities. Those are some of the principal criteria. So, and then the other item, subsection six, if this is recommended by the Planning Commission and approved by the council, is that if there are changes in a phase of the development that decreases the number of residential units, those residential units are not transferable to other phases unless the council specifically pre-approves it. So in a nutshell, that's what this change in the, in the city code would be if approved.
Great, thank you. Mr. Murray, any questions for our legal counsel? I have one. I just need to look, right? Look down, look down instead of left and right. Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you. Just one quick question. Is this applicable just going forward, or is this to all project, in early development?
Technically, it's currently applicable because the council initially adopted it by resolution several weeks ago, and so it's currently in place. This just solidifies it as an official part of our code.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Commissioner Hanson.
No, I'm just ready to make a motion.
Please do. Thank you.
Well, we have to have a public hearing first.
Oh, we do? It's a text amendment. That would help.
Yeah, probably would.
Let's open this meeting to the public comment section. If anyone would like to discuss the proposed 2000 amendment to the West Jordan 2009 City Code as explained by Mr. Murray, please feel free to come forward and express your opinion. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to Commissioner Hanson, if you have any. Okay, Commissioner Green.
I buzzed in for jeopardy.
Okay. Make sure you state your comment in the form of a question.
Okay. How about, now, I like the idea of this, this, this particular amendment, because I think we've seen some abuses in the past. There's a couple of projects that come to mind that I think we've actually seen some abuses. The one question that I have, and it's not that I'm against this or the wording, but I'm wondering if we looked at this so that we have the full transparency and we had the full, so that we don't have what happened before in a couple of projects. I know paragraph four says that significant variations or modifications should require that the applicant developer apply for an amendment to their development plan. I'm wondering if, and I'm just talking off of my head after we're sitting here and we've talked about this, if it shouldn't just require all modifications to the development plan, require an amendment to the development plan, and then at that point, the zoning administrator decides whether it's major or minor, and if it's minor, it continues on as the, as a minor amendment, and if it's major, then it comes to the Commission, and that would, that would may speed line, from one aspect, it may speed it up, because you don't have the applicant submitting a written request for the variation, and then the zoning administrator dealing with it, and then he says, no, this is major, and he's got to go through all that work again. I'm wondering if there's just not a way to do that as part of the process. And then the other question is, is that I'm wondering if there isn't a way, and I don't think that on any minor deviation, it requires a approval anywhere, but I'm wondering if there, it shouldn't just be some sort of notification or something to the Commission and to the council that said, we made this minor modification, or, you know, whatever, just so that it's more than just one person that had the ability to see it. Those are, those are my two comments on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My personal opinion is if it's, if it's enough of a modification to where it doesn't meet the criteria, then I prefer to see it again, just because looking through, I don't know, just getting a note that says that we've made these, these changes, sometimes the changes are specific to design or specific to amenities and things, and I feel like that's something that we should review again.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you. I just, I agree with Commissioner Sikoski. I don't see a need to have a note that says, hey, we made this change. If it needs to come before someone's talking about it, if it doesn't need to be talked about, then I don't really need to see the notes again.
My, my thought was is that, you know, we, there's been a couple of projects that, and I wasn't on the Planning Commission at the time, but there were a couple of projects where minor changes were actually pretty significant. And then we, then we ended up with the mess, we won't say the garage at the Jordan Valley, at track station, but I think some of that mess was because of minor modifications. And so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way that if there's, if there's a modification and it's, and, and the zoning administrator sees it as minor, that there's some sort of check and balance on that, so that we don't have just an arbitrary or some other type of way, you know, some other type of, of decision that occurred, because I think we had that happen. And so that's, that's where, that's where I'm coming from. If it's minor, it's minor. I was just thinking of an additional step to make that minor more transparent, because we saw what happened in a couple of these developments. But it's not, it's not a drop-dead process or a drop-dead deal killer for me, because I think we're at least defining what a minor process, what a minor deviation is now, and that's, that's been long coming. I'm just, I was just thinking of how that added just a hair more transparency to the overall process, and if it, if it's too much work, then we can, then we can, we can drop that. I mean, I don't care. I was just thinking that it's one of those things that just makes the decision of the zoning administrator that much more transparent.
Thank you. Commissioner Green. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that provision five in, in the verbiage talks about what the provisions that would, would initiate a change there, and those talk about, in A, it says, "The same uses, residential, commercial, office space, medical, et cetera, exist, and all footprint setbacks, other requirements, subsidy ordinances, standard regulations, et cetera, are met, and the heights of buildings are the same or lower than in approved development plan, and the density of the housing units, if any, is the same or lower than in approved, the approved development plan, and the amount of office space, commercial space, or other similar required space, if any, is the same or more than any approved, or in the approved development plan, and the amount or number of improvements and amenities, if any, is the same or more in the approved development plan, and all other similar measurable criteria are the same or more or better as determined by the zoning administrator in the applications compared to the approved development plan, with owner-occupied residential units being deemed to be better than leased or rented residential units." I think that takes care of 99% of anything that would ever be an issue, because always, when there's an issue, it's in one of those criteria. And so personally, I feel like it's covered enough to where we can just move forward with the motion.
Commissioner Green.
One, one last comment, and maybe, maybe it's just an admitted, but when the zoning administrator acts as the zoning administrator, he's acting in a fairly finding of fact, administrative capacity there, right? Maybe the easiest thing to do is adopt something, and, and it doesn't have to be transmitted, but maybe it's very easy for the zoning administrator, as part of his approval process, that to adopt a finding of fact that says, this, this was a minor one because A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and that's just part of the packet, so that if there's any question about it, then we know exactly why he made that decision.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that he automatically generates that kind of a memo, so it'd be just easy enough to just forward that probably to the Planning Commission and council. That's essentially what you're saying, is if that document already exists, why not just let you be aware of it, right?
And if there's a finding of fact, and that, that's 90% of the, the issue anyway. So yeah, that would, yeah, that's, okay, I'm good with that.
Great, thank you. Good valid comments, especially if we're granting broader latitude to someone. It's great to have a check and a balance in just communication. Great, thank you. Any other comments or any motion?
No, we, I'm not, I was going to make a motion. But I will be talking until now.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the West Jordan 2009 City Code subsection 13-5J-10E Development Plan process with updated procedures for variations from approved plans and development standards.
Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Sikoski. Is there any discussion with that motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan. That brings us to item number three on our public hearing calendar, agenda this evening. Anaya's Market, 1594 West, 7,800 South, preliminary site plan, preliminary subdivision plat, and preliminary development plan in a CCF zone. Trio Design Incorporated, Brittany Johnson is the applicant. Is she present this evening? Please come forward. Please tell us about your application.
Hi. Okay, so I'm representing the owner. I'm the architect on the project, and the owner, Rahilio Anaya, he owns a current business in West Jordan, just a little bit further east, and he'll, he owns currently two parcels that we, as part of the plat, will be combining and demolishing the two existing homes on the south side of the property. And then he will be building a market and then also retail rental space, and it's just under 12,000 square feet. And then he'll be moving his market over there. He has a private office and a small portion of the second story on the north side. And then on the south side, up again, 7,800 South, there's retail spaces that he will rent out, and the parking area goes up along the east side of the building and then also towards the north side of the property. I think that's about it.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Thanks very much. We'll reserve some time for you if needed after the public hearing.
Thanks.
Let's go to our staff. Ms. Larson, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the applicant, Anaya's Market, is, it's a three-pronged application, so the major subdivision plat, the preliminary site plan, and the preliminary development plan. Starting with the major subdivision plat, currently this property is not located in a subdivision, so a new subdivision is being created, which will allow the applicant to dedicate a right-of-way in front of the property, which will allow the city to include as the public right-of-way, the park strip and the sidewalk. The preliminary site plan, because this is located in a city center frame in a transit station-oriented overlay district, certain placement requirements on the site will be required. So it would be the placement of the building and the placement of the parking lot. Typically in this area, we'd prefer that the parking lot is placed towards the rear edge of the sides of the building. edge of the sides of the building, and the building being located as close to the public right-of-way as possible. And on the site plan, that is what the applicant is designed for. Towards the north of the property is a single-family residential. In order to act as a kind of bumper, the landscaping will be a minimum of 20 feet wide here, and staff will be reviewing the lighting plan to make sure that any direct lighting is restricted to the site only. The preliminary development plan is attached to the staff report, and staff is recommending the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan with the nine conditions listed in the staff report, the preliminary sub-development plan with the two conditions listed in the staff report, and the preliminary major subdivision with the two conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Larson? Commissioner Green.
So I guess I'm trying to make sure that I understand the piece of property correctly. This particular piece of land we're talking about subdividing, we're actually talking about the space east or west of the current. This doesn't include the current of Anaya's Market that's there. This is the two houses and what's behind it, and it doesn't border that street, doesn't affect the H&R block or that strip mall that's right there to the east that's got the nail salon and anything in it. So this is a new development. In reality, we're tearing down two old crappy houses and putting a whole new development in, not substituting something farther to the east.
That's correct. It's a completely new development. The two houses that are used for businesses right now will be demolished with this development. Anaya's Market will be moved further to the west for this development, so the current location of Anaya's Market will have to have a new tenant, but this would be, the site would be completely new.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Larson? Seeing none, we'll open the public comments section of the public hearing. If you have anything that you'd like to say regarding this application, please feel welcome and invited to come forward to this house. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and discuss among the commission. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm looking at the west elevation, and it just doesn't look like, on the length, our ordinance requires that it can't be, we're going to need some puff outs or some kind of verification rather than just a flat surface.
We have those architectural requirements in other zoning districts, but it doesn't apply to the city center frame district. We have other architectural standards. If you look at the aerial, if we go back to the aerial, there's a retail store, I think it's the tire shop right here, that would be immediately adjacent to Anaya's Market. So I know that during the design review committee, there was a couple of concerns because there was that blank space of wall, but because that building immediately to the west is located in that position on the parcel, you wouldn't be able to see much of that wall anyway.
Okay, and then another question is, where on the north end, we do have the 20-foot of plant materials, would there be a wall of any kind to separate this from, because there will be parking there, to separate this from the residential area?
There would need to be a six-foot wall, minimum.
Okay. Thank you. I was trying to find that before I asked that question.
The rating plan shows block wall on the north side. It says there's an existing block wall there.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, upon evidence and explanation received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan and preliminary major subdivision, and forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the preliminary development plan for Anaya's Market located at 1594 West and 7800 South.
Thank you. And just to clarify, should we mention the nine conditions on the preliminary site plan and the two on the preliminary major subdivision?
I will include the nine conditions and the two conditions that are set forth in the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a second to the motion? Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you.
Did he say approve or forward? Because this is an approval.
Well, two were, and one was a forward.
Okay. Development plans were.
Why don't we, right, so, how about, would you mind, Commissioner Sikoski, just re-articulate? Did we get it? Okay. Because we're approving the preliminary site plan and the preliminary major subdivision, and then forwarding a positive recommendation for the preliminary development plan, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a second?
Yes.
Great, my Commissioner Quinney. Is there any discussion to the motion?
Yeah, as I'm looking on page nine with the staff recommendations, I, they're, all three of them have conditions. The preliminary site plan has nine, the preliminary development plan has two, and the preliminary subdivision plan has two conditions of approval. So I just want to make sure, because we said nine and two, it's really nine, two, and two.
So there's two on the preliminary development plan?
Yes.
I did say, "With the conditions set forth in the staff report," so.
But then, I just wanted to make sure.
With all conditions set forth in the staff report.
Got it. Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Better safe than sorry and having to revisit this, so that Ms. Johnson has to come back. Great, let's vote then. All in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for doing business. Please pass that along to the people with whom you are. Thanks for coming. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a text amendment to amend the West Jordan 2009 City Code, Section 13-5C4, to include vehicle and equipment repair, limited as a conditional use in the PC zone with citywide applicability. Hale Properties, or is that Halli Properties?
Hall.
Hall, sorry. None of the above. Hall Properties LLC, Scott Fournier is the applicant.
That one you get, right?
Thank you. I did take four years of French. Please come forward, sir. Did I get that correct? Is that a French, Fournier?
Well, my name is George Byes. I am actually the, I am the engineer.
Okay.
I am the engineer for Discount Tires on this site, and Scott Fournier was unable to make it to the meeting tonight, so he's asked me to represent them, so.
Thank you.
I hope I can answer all your questions.
Great, please present anything you've prepared.
Well, I think Discount Tire, you're all familiar with the Discount Tire sites that are here in West Jordan. They're very excited to develop this site and look forward to be a member of the community again.
Great, thank you, and thanks for filling in. Do we have any questions that we'd like to ask? Apparently not. Let's go, we're good, thank you. Let's go to staff, and Mr. Gardner has this item. No, Mr. McCallas, correct? Mr. McCallas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. This is a request of text amendment. As I mentioned in our pre-meeting, Scott Tire is looking at eventually locating a tire store on intersection 5600 West and 7800 South. Clay Hall would be a subdivision that we had looked at several weeks ago. In order to do that, that area is owned, is owned by the planning community, and the vehicle and equipment repair limited is not currently permitted to be allowed to use in that zoning district. So Discount Tire is looking at requesting a zoning text amendment to allow that vehicle repair to be in that SC zone. It's fairly straightforward, this would be, as we are recommending, a condition of using that zoning district. If you look in the staff report, it talks about the definition of a planning community zone, and it's one that allows or encourages mixed uses, but down at the bottom of the definition, it also talks about limiting noise and other things that might impact other uses around it. In this case, with the SC, with PC zone district, one of the things that that does afford the planning commission is a lot of latitude in terms of impacts or mitigating impacts to joint uses. With automobile repair, as I also mentioned in the pre-meeting, there's not, they don't generate much more use, they're much more vehicle traffic than any other business. I think really the only impacts would be noise, but in that zoning district, given it's conditional use and given that's also planning community, I think we've got enough latitude to be able to mitigate those kinds of impacts that would be generated from that news. We did just get a, I think it's just an acoustical review of a couple of the existing sites, and it just gives you an idea, but I think basically it states that the traffic that's generated on those busy arterial streets is typically noise, and those are generated by the impact wrenches. So as we see this, we feel it's a good fit, we feel that we're protected by the conditional use process and findings in the conditional use process, and we think it'll be a good fit in that zoning district, and we recommend approval.
Great, thanks, Mr. McCallas. Any questions for staff from the commission? Commissioner Green.
So my question, and this goes back to something that we had a couple of meetings ago, that we liked and the council didn't like, and we had those discussions last week. With this type of the vehicle, what we're calling the vehicle and equipment repair limited, that piece of property, we're trying to remove the zoning condition over there at 94 South and 13th West, would that have fallen in as a vehicle and equipment repair limited?
Yes.
Okay.
And the only reason that he could not just open up there is because, specifically, because of the permission of approval placed by the city council in 2000.
I'm not sure I'm sold on this. Probably my biggest hang-up on this is going to be vehicles that are left on site. Sorry, I need to speak into the microphone. Are there going to be, I mean, looking at the list here, I think some of those things are things that are not going to necessarily be done in a day, and there's going to be vehicles that are going to be left on site. Talk to me about that.
Well, as with any auto repair, I think that's a definite possibility, but it's not, again, through the conditional use process, there are things that you can control, that would be things like hours of operation, where things are stored. So I think there are ways to get around that, but there may be some vehicles there that may just have an area, or they require them to be stored in the building, and there's just a number of ways to be able to address that.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just my own personal experience. I lived up close to a tire shop when I was younger, and this particular type of tire shop, they do stuff that would keep vehicles for maximum one or two days in like the worst-case scenario, but even most of the overhaul work that they would be doing there would really have not much of an impact. I see the question, though, where this is a text amendment that goes across the whole city, do we want to allow that in a section where vehicles could be? And perhaps, like Mr. McCallas was talking about, we could make a requirement on shops that would be trying to move in, to have some sort of a screened area where vehicles would be stored behind the property. Would we be overstepping our authority in requiring something like that? Duncan, do you know?
So we state that.
So if we allow this text amendment, which allows vehicle repair services across, we're allowing it across the whole city, if we put that in a PC zone where it's close to homes, one of the concerns is having vehicles that would be left overnight or for a long period, you know, kind of torn apart in the parking lot or just in the parking lot. I'm wondering if we can require, through this current setup, that when someone comes in and wants to do like a body shop or something where there's going to be long-term vehicles, can we require them to have some sort of a screened area to park those vehicles that would be outside and secured overnight? I'd probably defer to our planners on that.
Body shops are not allowed. This is pretty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since you've got all the damage brakes or tires, but not the heavier.
So this is just the light kind of stuff, like tunics would fall into this category? Okay. Does that pretty much answer your question? Yes, yes, I know. It's a policy decision, really. I mean, you can, there's obviously ramifications either way, if you leave it in, or if you amend it according to what you're talking about here. I guess my question is, in any of these circumstances, can we say you have to have some sort of screen?
Yes.
We can?
Yes, because state law allows, especially if it's established as a conditional use, that any perceived detriment to the area that the planning commission feels needs to be mitigated can be mitigated, whether it's through prohibiting outdoor storage of anything, whether it's prohibiting outdoor storage of vehicles. You could make them, put them inside the building, because the applicant is fully aware of what they're getting into when they come before the planning commission, and that's fully within your authority, yes.
And it's a good question that you ask, because you're talking about the principle of exactions, and it is a legal exaction. It's okay if, as Mr. Gardner's mentioned, if there's a direct correlation between the issue and the solution, that the one definitely is intended to fix the other, and it's logical. There's a nexus, is what we call it, as opposed to an illegal exaction, where we're just willy-nilly making it up and there is no real causal connection. Right, okay, thank you. I'm a lot more comfortable with this text amendment, knowing that we have that authority. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. As I read through criteria two at the bottom, it says outside storage is not allowed in the PC zone district. So they're asking for limited variation, or because we will make outside storage, that right now it is not allowed.
Typically, where you're talking about outside storage, it's for equipment for that, that you use.
Not on.
Not necessarily automobiles that are there at service. So it might be like, you know, if it was a ten X, a ten X truck, or the parts, or tires, or whatever. I think that's the distinction, but still, you can. or whatever, I think that's, that's the distinction, but still you can, you can impose conditions that would mitigate, you know, those potential impacts if they're running.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with no outside storage of automobiles, you know, I understand, you know, their own equipment, but not one that is left overnight. It should be left inside the building, not out in the parking lot. So it leaves it open to not looking really good on the side and secondly to.
Was that page four that you were referencing, Commissioner Hanson?
Three.
Three, because on page four of the letter of intent, it also, I don't know where it went. Just on page four, after exit B, it says, on page four, recycling program and sustainability efforts, tires are recycled from an indoor storage area once a week, the project will follow many of the established lead guidelines. No outdoor storage are used, there will be no outdoor storage or product installation of any kind at the site, customer vehicles are rarely kept overnight and when necessary are stored inside, there is no outside overnight storage of vehicles. Is that?
That's only for that specific use, but there are other.
Okay, that's what I was figuring, that's what I was figuring, thank you.
And there's no reason that in the future, that in a PC zone, that that can be used for a very good template for, there's nothing that would prohibit the planning commission from, from doing that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Luthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not so worried about this particular applicant, I'm worried about the impacts for future applicants. There is a auto body shop that is on the corner of Thirteenth that meets these as far as I know and it's kind of an eyesore. Um, that's, that's where I'm concerned, I'm concerned that this is going to become, you know, okay, we'll put a big fence around this and now we've got, that's, that's what I'm worried about, I'm not necessarily worried about this particular applicant or this particular use, I live out that way and I think it would actually be nice to have something like that a little bit closer. I'm worried about the impacts of this with everything else and it talks about brake repairs, sure, it talks about air conditioning, but it also talks about transmission and engine repairs, which are a lot bigger deal and can take time depending on what's going on with the vehicle.
Commissioner Green.
I am not a fan of this and let me tell you why. First off, I agree, it's not because it's Discount Tire, it's because we're making a general text amendment and when we start talking about planned community zones and we see what planned communities normally are supposed to be, although I have a hard time believing that Riverpoint was a planned community, but when we look at planned communities, the idea, at least from my, from, from my perspective, planned communities are supposed to be those walkable communities, those friendly neighborhoods, those other kinds of things and when you look down the list of permitted and conditional things right now, we don't even have gas stations in a planned community zone. There's no, there's no gas stations, there's no, it's, it's really things that, that are designed around, you know, you have banks, it's interesting, you have an auditorium in the stadium, I guess we can put them, we can put Maverick Center right in the middle of the PC, but the, you know, the, the idea would be that, that you have this community sense and when you start talking about auto repairs, then the slippery slope is, oh, we want a gas station, oh, we want this, oh, we want that, and I think it creates a slippery slope. The other thing is, and I, I will tell you from my perspective, because we got beat up, we, we got rejected on the one over Thirteenth, on Thirteenth West and I talked to the, I talked to a couple of council members offline and, as we were talking about that particular thing, that particular thing, and their perspective was that on that particular piece of property, bringing in this type of repair thing, because the person was going to have thirty or forty cars in the back and those kinds of things, they didn't even want it on the corner of Ninety, uh, a base of Ninety and Thirteenth West. Now we're talking about putting this in a planned community, I, maybe the council surprised me, but based on their last vote, I'm not sure that they would even, even entertain this because the, because you're putting an auto repair business in the middle of a planned community. And so for me, I think that this is going to be very inconsistent with the use of a planned community, it creates a slippery slope as we start talking about other uses that somebody's going to come in and say, well, I want to be in a PC, I want to be in a PC and then in effect destroys the planned community because we're allowing any sort of business on a text amendment. Uh, so I think it adds for the slippery slope and on this one, it's not Discount Tire, it's the fact that you could have cars sitting out there, other things, other uses, that I just don't think are compatible with a planned community. And so after the public hearing, we get some more, but at this point in time, barring anything from the public hearing, I'm going to be firmly opposed to this text amendment.
Commissioner Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would agree with you, Commissioner Green, if it wasn't for the fact that it is a planned community. Planned community zone gives the planning commission a whole lot of teeth as far as what we can decide goes in there and what doesn't, what applies and what doesn't. And, and the reason that there is a planned community zone is because there are certain areas within the city that, that, you know, don't necessarily fit the mold for straight, straight zoning residential or straight zoning commercial or whatever. And, and that's one thing that I really like about it, as far as this particular development, and I'm using this as an example simply because there's going to be a lot of developments that will also fit this mold. If we set, if, if we allow this and we allow Discount Tire to go in there and we put stiff restrictions on the way it has to look and what we would like to see individually for that particular use, then we can use that as a model in the future to come back and say, well, we've applied these very stiff restrictions to Discount Tire in this use and, and so you have to conform to the same kind of deal. Where I, I agree with you to an extent that it's like, you know, the, the walkable community idea, this is going on Seventy-Eight Hundred South, which is fronting a major arterial road. I, I don't want to limit ourselves in a planned community by saying, well, we only want walkable communities in these areas, simply because then we're cutting out all of that frontage to arterial roads that could be a viable, uh, future economic impact to West Jordan. And, and we're, we set in a sense a precedent that we can't have any kind of business like that in a PC zone. So in, in the same breath, I feel like we would be doing ourselves a disservice by just straight out cutting any of those items out. I think the PC zone, the PC zone's intent is to allow us to look at individual circumstances for individual areas and then apply what we feel benefits that area and that's, that's why we have to carefully look at each PC zone as it comes through. So I don't necessarily see that allowing this text amendment would, would hurt future PC zones, it, it just gives us a little bit more latitude on what we can apply there.
Commissioner Luthy.
I agree with pieces of both of what you're saying. My, my biggest thing is it comes down to is criteria two, where it says, in reviewing this request, the planning commission will need to determine if allowing limited vehicle repair as conditional use is consistent with the intent of a PC zoning district and whether there's adequate justification for the amendment and I don't think that there's adequate justification for the amendment. I don't think that there's any reason it needs to be added to what's already been established on that. If we're looking at that, then why are we limiting and not having gas stations or some of the other things that would go in these? If that's the case, maybe we need to look closer at what we're calling PC and what we're calling strictly this is commercial and other zoning types and maybe we need to look a little closer when they bring these in that may be on these corners, we don't want to call them PC zones, we want to call them something else. I think as a general, like I said already before, I don't have anything against the company that wants to come in, I think it would be a great asset, but in this particular zone and making a text amendment to the zone, I do not think is a good decision at this point.
Commissioner Green.
See, and I agree with you, see, I, I agree with you that this is on Seventy-Eighth and Fifty-Sixth, but, and, and, and I'm gonna, we, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to a sports analogy. We've already set up the rules, we know what the public policy is for a planned community, for a planned community and what this city has envisioned for a planned community with the type of businesses that are in there and we already have that in code with the permitted and conditional uses. Now we're talking about adding another, we're not talking about, and I agree with you, Commissioner Sikowski, that when we're talking about changing something to a planned community, we can look and we can, we can make those modifications and we have some control, but what we're allowing is a vehicle repair shop into a planned community and, and this is after the fact that unfortunately, I have to tell you, that the developer who decided he wanted to put a planned community, he knew what the rules were going in with this and he knew that there were going to be restrictions in this planned community, that we don't put any type of commercial, and we don't put every type of commercial development into a planned community. The city had set up what a valid planned community looks like and that was the set of rules that we set up for Clay Hollow and some of the rest of the Peterson development. And so now what we're talking about is trying to change the game mid-string because, hey, I found somebody that wants to buy a piece of property, I'm going to sound a little cynical, but it's, hey, I found somebody who wants to buy a piece of property and develop and the rules don't, and so we gotta change them. And, and, and the next guy that comes in says, I want to put a gas station in and I want to put this in and I want to put this in and I think we're on a slippery slope because if we grant this, then we go down that slippery slope of what else are we going to allow in a PC? Because I agree with you, Discount Tire is not going to be the problem, it's what happens in every other PC zone that we get zoned in the city that somebody says, hey, I want to put a vehicle and equipment repair there, I want to put a car wash in, I want, because that's coming up, I want to put a car wash in, I want to put, uh, because that's consistent with the, the SC one and two and three and, and at what point do we say we have to protect, for lack of a better term, and we talked about this last week, the, the integrity of the city and what we envision as the city development and I think this is inconsistent with that. I, I think that, you know, when we, 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 I, I think that what we haven't met here in this type of text amendment, and I will, I'll use some references, is that there's got to be a burden and there's got to be an inference that the current ordinance is good. And I don't think we've met the burden yet of saying, why do you meant, why the, why the current ordinance as written with what belongs in a PC zone needs to be changed? I don't think we've met that burden. We're talking about making a text amendment for one developer who will do a good job, but we're, we're applying that text amendment across the entire city with a multitude of PC zones that could pop up and we've had a bunch. Do we want, for example, a PC zone in River, or, I don't think about this, what, what could we put in Riverpoint if somebody wants to put a vehicle and equipment repair in Riverpoint at Ninety South and, and Redwood Road? Do we want to start attacking the PC zone by adding all these other businesses because we think the commercial is good? We have to take a hard look at what, why we do PC zones, I think you're right, we have to look at, a hard look at what we do with PC zones, but we also have to say, this is what a PC zone looks like and I don't think that we've met any sort of burden to overcome that the current zoning ordinance requires a text amendment because of, because of the changes to PC zone.
Commissioner Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where do tire shops, gas stations, service centers go? Where do we want them in the city? We don't want them in our neighborhoods, we don't want them stuffed back into pedestrian areas. Where are all the PC zones in our city right now? They're on arterial routes, Ninety and Redwood Road, let's just think back at the ones that we've all seen lately, there's Seventy-Eight Hundred South and Fifty-Six Hundred West, Seventy-Eight Hundred South and up around Thirteenth West, Seventy-Eight Hundred South and U-11. So my question is, and I agree with you, and I agree with you, that we need, we need to look at our PC zone again, I totally agree with that, but if we want these type of businesses in our city on the arterial routes where they should be, then this really is something that we need to consider tonight because, because if we're going to attract a business to West Jordan, the kind of businesses that we want, I want these types of services available to the citizens of West Jordan. Is the PC zone where we want them? I think if it applies on an arterial route, then yes. And, and that's where all of our PC zones are right now. So personally, I'm not opposed to this with the caveat that I do feel like we do need to address what our PC zone is and that can be changed after this. We can address the PC zone after this. So that's just my opinion.
Commissioner Green.
When you say we don't want tire stores and stuff in our neighborhoods, that's what we're doing when we put them in a PC zone. I understand where you're coming from when we talk about a PC zone, that a lot of PC zones are on arteries. Whatever reason that, that occurs, but the PC zone is supposed to be a good infill project. What, what concerns me here, and I'm gonna, I'll say this out loud and there's probably going to be a developer too that'll, that'll slash my tires, no, no pun intended, at the end of the meeting, is that two weeks, a couple of weeks ago, we have the property at the corner of Seventy-Eighth and Fifty-Sixth that we're talking about putting in a IHC, a couple of buildings and the developer tells, tells us, there's no way that you can put any other commercial development on this piece of property. Yet two weeks later, we come in and they say, we can put a commercial development in a PC zone and we can't put it on Seventy-Eight Hundred South and Fifty-Six Hundred West because you can't put it on Seventy-Eight Hundred South and Fifty-Six Hundred West. Something's not adding up here when we, when we, and by the way, they're the same developer. So something's not adding up here, that doesn't make sense to me and I don't think, there, there are other places, there, there are commercial zones, I agree with you, we want this commerce in the city. When Commissioner Pack was giving his interview with the, with the, with the city council here a few weeks ago on, on the appointment process, your number one issue was economic development and I agree with you hundred percent, I think we need economic development in the city and that's where we're, that's where we're hurting. What I disagree with is using a PC zone to put these kind of businesses that we slippery slope to say, okay, let's put a gas station in there the next time, because we want a text amendment to put a gas station in a PC, PC zone. We want to put a, whatever else is inconsistent, I mean, you look down that list of, of things that we don't allow in a PC zone and at what point do we draw the line and say, look, West Jordan City is a city of good neighbors, West Jordan City has an adequate development pro, process and we don't change our text amendments on our zoning ordinances, and I don't want to use the term willy-nilly, but I will, we change the, the text amendments to match developer that comes in and every developer that comes in that wants to build on a piece, piece of property, we automatically change the text amendment to allow something else. And at some point in time, we have to draw the, even if it's a conditional use like what you say, where, where we can make modifications and we can pull the line, at some point in time, if that's the case, we just need to eliminate the PC zone completely and let developers do whatever they want in the city because that's what, that's what we're, I think that's what we're opening, you know, I have a cynical attitude, but I think that's what, that opens the door to is when we crack the door open, somebody's going to push a little further, when we crack the door open, we're going to push a little bit further and I just don't like going down that slippery slope.
Commissioner Luthy.
Um, I agree. I, I think that the real problem here is what is being zoned where and not what's being allowed in the zone. I think I'm going to hold the line that where, there's no reason to make this change and that maybe that they need to look harder at the developer, what zone they really are in and want to be in, especially when these are being driven, let's change the zone by the developer themselves. In this application, in this exact location, I completely agree that this is a good location for it, I just, maybe then it shouldn't be that zone. I think that's, I think that's my concern, is that it's not a concern of, is this the right place, but is this the right zone?
Commissioner Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The problem is that we don't have a zone that allows multiple uses like this other than the PC zone. We don't have one. So we're talking about getting rid of the PC zone as some sort of solution, but that's not a solution. Because there are chunks of land, and this one on 5678 is a perfect example of this. There's chunks of land that have arterial roads that border them that are the perfect place, as you just stated, for businesses like this. But business can't survive behind these other businesses. So where you have these chunks that go deep off of arterial routes, what we want as a city, what we've talked about as a city, is that we want businesses along our arterial routes with homes or with other items behind them. You guys keep bringing up gas stations. The Sycamores over on the very west end of West Jordan, all that's out there is houses and a gas station. And the gas station was just barely cut out of the PC zone, so it doesn't fall in the PC zone. But that gas station is like a node of walkability for our neighborhood. We love it. Everybody's at the gas station on Friday getting their snacks or whatever. It doesn't have to be, we look at these services as, and sometimes I feel like we demonize them, but that's the proper place for it. It's against an arterial road and it's against a collector road. That's the proper place for a gas station. This is the proper place for a tire shop. And where the majority of our PC zones border arterial roads, I don't want to cut out opportunities for businesses like this to come in, where they should be. And where we don't have another zoning for mixed use that would potentially allow a developer to cut up a piece of property in a way that makes sense, again, against an arterial road, I personally feel that by cutting this use out or by not allowing this type, and yes, I'm in favor of including gas stations in the PC zone, simply because of that same reason. That's the proper place for them. And if we want the city to build that in a way that makes sense, we have to have a zone that will include opportunities for that development.
Also, an interesting conundrum. We want economic development, but we want it in certain areas, but there might not be another appropriate area to put it, but the area that we're talking about putting it in isn't appropriate. The wheel goes round and round, and I certainly see it both ways. It's a very interesting, very interesting discussion, good merit on both sides, and I think our city's better off because of the great discussion and the different backgrounds that we have. Is there anything that I missed on recapitulating that discussion? Is that we're uncertain of what zone, well, I guess to use the proper word, the zone in an area that's deemed a PC, do we want that to have businesses of this type? We've said that this particular business wouldn't be a problem. However, it opens the door to other businesses. Yeah, Commissioner Sokowski, as you mentioned, we, the planning commission would have, would see each application, and it would still be under our purview to grant or deny, so it's not giving a blanket opportunity to any business. Have I missed any major points of the great discussion? Commissioner Luthy.
I think the only thing that's still not here on this is that if this is the case and that this is where we want these PC zones to go, then why are we not looking at the entire list? Why are we only looking at a couple little options? I mean, it's either, maybe there needs to be a different zone or an overlay or something that can be added to these areas that are intersections, because I 100% agree with you that this is a great place for this type of, I get it, but I still think that we're causing problems with what it really is. So either we as the city need to be able to create another zone or an overlay to be able to fit certain areas that this is a good fit, so that it doesn't just make a mass change on everything. Because as soon as you start saying, well, now this is allowed in the zone, even though we still get, you know, a way in on it, they have, you know, well, you just told us we could do that here. I mean, there's, I don't know. I think that we need to, I think it's a bigger picture than what we're looking at.
No, good point. And there's the potential for litigation. Well, you let this person do it, you're showing favoritism, why not let us do it? Well, it's just not the right spot. Well, why isn't it the right spot? Give us something objective, not subjective. Good comment. Commissioner Sokowski.
Thank you. And just in report to that, I agree with you. The problem is that we don't have a zone that's right. And I agree with that. But here's the other side of that coin, is that we have a lot of developers who have already bought land under the PC zone. And they are by law allowed to use that land under the PC zone. If we hold on to our reins super tight here and say, we're not going to allow any of that, then we're cutting out a substantial frontage of a lot of our arterial routes to a lot of business. So there are pros and cons to both sides of that. Yes, in a sense, by saying, we don't want any, we don't want to make this change because it covers the whole city, we win on something that could potentially be ugly eventually. But if we cut it out, then any businesses that, the majority of businesses in my opinion, that would be good businesses for those frontages also get cut out. So I feel like we're risking the future of all of those frontages on maybe one or two bad eggs for, you know, do we stop all businesses for one or two bad eggs versus allowing the majority of businesses to come in and being that type of friendly city to business and development in their proper place, just because we're worried about one or two?
No, good point. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Green, it's true, I think economic development is a major consideration. And then also last week in our joint session with the city council, I mentioned, we want to be proactive in safeguarding our city and, as has been mentioned, not constantly amend for every application that comes in. You know, what is our vision of the city versus what are the applications that are being brought before us and acting, you know, trying to act proactively instead of reactively? So it's a, yeah, conundrum. See it both sides. Did you have another comment, Commissioner Green?
I'll leave the last in the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Yes, we do have a public hearing, and now's the time. Let's open the public hearing. Please feel welcome and invited to come up and weigh in on this conversation. That's not much help, Commissioner Green. We'll close the public comments section and bring it back for more deliberation among the commissioners. And grateful, even though this is a lengthy conversation, it's true, this affects the future, and that's why we're here. It affects families, it affects businesses, it affects people. So I'm grateful we're deliberate and taking time to ensure that we make the best decision possible. Commissioner Green.
I think we probably beat the horse. And I think it's going to be very clear from whatever we do that the council's going to have a good record for this afterwards, depending on what the outcome of this is. There are a couple of things I think we can do. So with that, I'm going to say, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to amend the 2009 City Code Section 13-5-C-4 to include vehicle and equipment repair limited as a conditional use in the PC zone, with the specific finding of fact that the PC zone, this does not conform to the general plan and consistent with the goals and objectives of a PC zone.
Is there a second to Commissioner Green's motion? Commissioner Sokowski, do you have a comment or?
Mine will be a comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Luthy.
I'll second that, if we can add to it, that there is no adequate justification.
Can we, just one moment, I apologize, Commissioner Luthy.
Sorry, I can't push the button.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, I would second that with the amendment that it does include that there is no adequate justification for the amendment.
I'll agree with that.
Great, thank you. So we have that amended motion. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Sokowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am not in favor of the negative recommendation, and I feel like it could be something very simple added to the PC zone that we currently have, stating that we would only allow this type of business on frontage to arterial routes. I think it could be very simply fixed. And I feel like we could even include a comment in here as a positive motion recommended to change this, but only allow that these types of businesses could be allowed on frontage to arterial routes. That sets a precedent for PC zones in the future, where we have, where we have a lot of PC zones that front arterial routes. We're not excluding businesses from West Jordan, we're just making it so that they're not allowed in the neighborhood section. They're not allowed facing community roads. They're only allowed when they front the main road.
Which means, is that then you have to include all or nothing?
Any automotive-type businesses. It's a simple fix, rather than, yeah.
Commissioner Hatch.
Wow, great discussion. I would have to agree with Commissioner Sokowski. I think we have to make room for businesses like this. I think they're essential to a community growth and just to bring businesses to our community. The question is where, and I agree with Commissioner Sokowski, that it needs to be in areas that aren't next to communities but still accessible. So I am not in favor of the negative recommendation.
Commissioner Luthy.
I'm actually okay with the compromise that was suggested, as long as it's written in there that, I mean, what you had said, that it needs to be a frontage property. I think that that fixes some of the solution of what my big concern was, as far as, let's put an overlay, and this is in essence, an overlay. Here's your condition, here's your overlay that allows it in only these areas, because I do think that this is a good fit for this area. I just don't like the idea of making this a broad statement. Now, if it gets down to a much smaller statement of, if you front this major road, this major intersection, go for it, because then that is where you want to be, that is where the people are going. So that, you know, in essence, is the overlay I was asking for from the beginning. So I'm okay with the compromise as stated. Can we do that is another question. Can we make that?
You could make it a conditional use in the PC zone district with a little subscript that now at the bottom of the table are permitted conditional uses that, when that's up to arterial streets.
Does that bear any relevance to the second of your motion, Commissioner Luthy?
It does. Like I said, I think that that's the compromise, that is the overlay that I was discussing from the beginning, that there needs to be a way to have, that it is only for this specific instance. It's not a broad case. You can't apply it everywhere. You can only apply it to these very specific places.
So are you going to keep your second or pull it?
I will pull it.
Is there any other discussion, or is there a substitute second to Commissioner Green's Actually, his amended motion. Seeing none, the motion fails. Do we have any further discussion or another alternative motion? Commissioner Sokowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will make a motion that, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I moved that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to amend the 2009 City Code Section 13-5-C-4 to include vehicle and equipment repair limited as a conditional use in the PC zone with the subscript that this type of business must face an arterial route and cannot be included in any neighborhood development.
Commissioner Quinney. We have a motion by Commissioner Sokowski and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Is there any discussion to this motion? All in favor, say aye. So, one moment, sorry. We have a hand in the air by Mr. McCandless.
Are you talking about facing or fronting?
Facing. It has to face the arterial route.
Can we define?
Fronting, fronting, yeah. Let's change that to fronting.
So just so that we're all clear, Mr. McCandless, could you please define for us so that we have, it's a matter of semantics, facing and fronting?
Yeah, when you're talking about facing, it means the building orientation has to face out onto the arterial street. There may be situations where you may want to change that, or the building might face the side. Whereas the fronting means that the lot itself is adjacent to the arterial street.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCandless. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Sokowski, your motion was that it is fronting?
Correct. It will be that they're allowed to front an arterial route.
Great. And Commissioner Quinney?
I am agreeable to that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion to the clarification of that motion? Commissioner Green.
If we say arterial route, then we're stuck with artery. And not every road in West Jordan's an artery. So, you know, here's my, here's my conundrum, and I think this goes back to something with Commissioner Luthy. I'm not opposed to having commercial on 5600 West and 7800 South, because I think that's where it belongs. PC zone's not where it belongs. If we, if we start saying artery, then, okay, then it faces a side street. Then it faces what street? It faces a major, if you put a PC on Redwood Road, does that qualify? If you put it on 2200 West, does that qualify? What's the, you know, and if you put a PC zone in the middle of the block in 2200 West and 78, between 70th and 78, are you going to allow a tire store there? Because that's in a PC zone that faces an arterial road. So, you know, you can see the slippery slope when we're going there, because anybody can put a PC zoning where they want, and if they got, if they've got a road that faces an artery or some sort of major road, it doesn't matter where that's at, we're going to allow it, because, and it could be in the middle of a whole entire residential area and we drop a PC zone, because this amendment still allows a tire store in the middle of an area. If we allow a PC zone and then we put it in saying, hey, this is our design, and it's consistent with the area, and then all of a sudden, because there's a whole bunch of neighborhoods around it, and all of a sudden, hey, we want to put a tire store right in the middle of all these other neighborhoods, and it's a conditional use because it's on a front-facing street. I think we're going down an area that we don't want, and we haven't thought through that enough, that I think that we ought to reject this text amendment, go back and rework it, come up with a better type of overlay, come up with some better wording, or we're going to get stuck with, we're going to get stuck with zoning problems that are going to last forever because we allowed vehicle repair shops in the middle of a PC zone that happens to be in the middle of a neighborhood that borders some sort of arterial street. And 13th West is a, 13th West is an arterial street. It's a collector road. Okay, but, so what are the arterial streets in?
90th South, 78th, 70th, 62th, Redwood Road, 5600 West, Ave Corridor, and U-11.
But could there be a future road that, could there be a future? A future road that becomes an arterial later on down the road? If we designate the current roads, but... If we designate the current roads, but then we open that up for other roads, then we're creating the same, I think we're creating the same mess. So that's why I'm against it.
Commissioner Sukoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it is part of our planning practice in West Jordan to not put residential on arterial routes. We don't want them. There is some, like Redwood Road, from old zoning. We're trying as hard as we can to get rid of that. The only way to get rid of that is to provide places for businesses to establish along arterial routes. We have to encourage that. And honestly, if there's an arterial route, an entire shop moves in and residents don't like that and it, you know, I'm not trying to push anybody out, but at the same time, we have a responsibility as, as planners to look at the future of West Jordan and allow the things in that should be on those types of routes. And by allowing this to front arterial routes, then we're doing a good thing for West Jordan in the future. We don't want to encourage arterial routes to have residential right against them. It's not good planning practice.
Mr. Gardner?
Go ahead, tell them. But as I say, we do that all the time. We've done that multiple, multiple, multiple times to prove the PC zone that is attached to an arterial route with residential zoning. We did it. We didn't do it, but we did it at U111 and 78th. We did it, we've done it, and we've done it at 72nd south and Redwood Road that the project finally failed. We've done it, we, you know, it wasn't PC, it was PRD. There's a PRD that was approved as a rezone on Redwood Road at 84 south. We put residential on arterials no matter what anybody says. They access the arterial. We do it all the time. And when we say we want to have PC zone and we have a PC zone that is supposed to be this walkable community with all this, all these amenities and 15% open space and all these amenities and everything, putting vehicle repair shops in the middle of that is inconsistent with a PC zone. Now I agree with you that we ought to put these resident, these types of businesses on our tip, on our artery, on the arterial road. But the fact of the matter is the PC zone is inconsistent with that. And so we've either got to step back and take a look at what we're using the PC zone for, which takes an entire rewrite with overlays, or we take a look at a different type of zoning or something else, but to say that we want to have tire stores or vehicle equipment repair stores in the middle of a PC zone, we want to be walkable and consistent and all those other kinds of things, we're just not doing it. And that just doesn't feel right. It's not consistent. I get where you're coming from, 100%. Because I want to have commercials 78th and 56th. But in a PC zone, this city already decided and yes, we can modify ordinances, but the city designed, deciding what commercial is appropriate for a PC zone and we're adding something that goes to a slippery slope. And at the end of the day, unless we can get the ordinance nailed down and we can really work through the ramifications of the ordinance, I think pushing this forward, pushing this forward is bad business practice for the city. Because we're saying anytime, you know, another developer could come in tomorrow and put a PC zone anywhere and they could do, and then they come and say, well, but you let the vehicle equipment repair go in the middle of a PC zone. Why won't you let something else? And why won't you let something else? And I think that this goes back to some discussions we had last week on sticking to the master plan. What's, what do we want West Jordan to look like? We've got to stick and hold their guns with the master plan and not change the ordinance because master plan, the change in the master plan is just a change in ordinance just like this. We've got to hold to some sort of consistency with what we want in the city and I, I get the economic development. I want to see it. But text amendment, amendment, a PC zone is just not it. And so that's why I'm against it.
Commissioner Sukoski?
Okay, this is my last comment. What my motion is right now won't affect anything except for the frontage on arterial routes. Currently, it's not going to change anything other than that. So I agree that we need to overcall the PC. That's foregone conclusion. We all agree on that. But what we're talking about right now is this specific instance and my motion will only affect arterial routes, which is where we want this kind of business. We've all stated that. So I'm going to ask that we complete this and have a vote before we go any farther.
Great. So Commissioner Sukoski calling the question, let's vote on his, on his motion. All in favor of the motion that's on the table, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries six to one with Commissioner Green casting the dissenting vote. Commissioner Green?
Consistent with some discussions that we had with the city council last week, I'm going to, because we have changed it in our bylaws, I'm going to seek, make a motion that the commission allow me to write a minority report and submit it with the minutes.
Is there any, is there any objection to that? Great, thank you, Commissioner Green. I think that's a great idea so that city council can see things from all angles. Thank you for being willing to do that. This brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening. Item number five, text amendment, amend the West Jordan 2009 city code, section 13-2-3, definitions defining self-serve and automated car wash facilities. Section 13-5E-3 permitting conditional uses establishing automated car wash facilities as a conditional use in the SC1 zone. With citywide applicability, Lone Star Builders is the applicant. And who is representing Lone Star this evening? Please come up and state your name for the record.
Jeff Burnson.
Joseph Ernest.
Thank you for your patience through the evening. Please present your application.
I'm sorry, I left my flag jacket at home. I should have probably worn it tonight, but I left it at home. I'm familiar with most of you here on the commission and it's a pleasure to be in front of you again. The genesis of this text amendment occurs with a parcel of property we've acquired and rezoned over on 7800 south and 3800 west, in case you are not aware of where that corner is. I'm sure you are. We've had Joseph and his company, Quick Quack Car Wash, come to us and inquire and want to be on that specific corner. In doing so, we have had the opportunity to meet or at least invite the community as a whole to meet with us at a town hall meeting. About the only people who actually came were the people in that specific neighborhood in which we had done the zone change itself. But the city was, at least we went up to Heather here in the administrative offices through Commissioner Burton and requested that that be emailed out and sent out through your distribution networks that you have here at the city. So that aside, we had about, I think, seven or eight represented, representation, seven, from seven to eight neighborhood residents. Our goal in that specific corner, and again, this is a text amendment for the whole city, so I understand that. Our whole goal in this whole thing is to create an opportunity to bring to the city in areas, and it was really interesting because there are six SC1 zone sites here. I have two of those. One is on U111 at 8600 south. So, which, thanks to a developer locally built a mountain on our particular piece of property that we are currently trying to figure out how to get rid of it. But the basis of this whole thing is, is to make a differentiation between car washes as currently defined in the code and automated car washes. We think there's a significant difference. As you can see from the text amendment, very simple automated car wash facilities where the driver does not have to initiate anything, just sits in there, takes them through a tunnel out the other end and they're able to go, drive off. Joe, Joseph here is representing the car wash company, can give you perhaps some more detail on exactly what an automated car wash does, how it can benefit the community and some of the things that they do. I think it's insightful.
Appreciate the time. Appreciate being here with you tonight as well. So Quick Quack Car Wash, I understand it's a text amendment for the whole city, but Quick Quack Car Wash, we're a car wash company. There are just under 40, there are 38 operating Quick Quacks in Colorado, Texas, California, and here in Utah, there are seven currently operating. We will have 40 here in Utah within the next four to five years. So Quick Quack is, if given the opportunity, we're committed to and hoping to be a commercial citizen of West Jordan. And we take that very seriously. In fact, the first 10 days after any grand opening are 10 days of free car washes. And how that car wash works is you'll pull up, they're queuing, and there'll be a friendly, a friendly representative, Quick Quack, who will take your order as far as what type of car wash you want. You'll go through an automated tunnel. The whole process takes three minutes. The automated tunnel does a fantastic job of washing your car and drying your car. Once you exit that tunnel, you will have the opportunity to vacuum your own car, do some detailing services that are just done by yourself. So it's designed to be efficient ingress and aggressive vehicles that are becoming through quickly. That being said, one of the things we pride ourselves on is our water conservation. An automated car wash these days, ones that are utilizing current technology are going to use roughly, well, I can tell you what Quick Quack uses. We use approximately 12 gallons of fresh water per vehicle. If you are in your driveway, you will use between 150 and 250 gallons of water. Through our recycling and reclamation processes within the tunnel themselves, the technology for saving water is phenomenal. So we are, we want all of your citizens out of their driveways just for this water-saving technology alone. That being said, we are extraordinarily committed to being involved in the community. We have a funny mascot, Quaggle's. And Quaggle's goes to Easter egg hunts and we're in, we have a float for the parades that your city will put on. We have, we sponsor fundraisers frequently. To the point, to what we'll do is if there's a sports team or a high school that wants to raise funds, they can approach us and we'll actually dedicate a night or a day, a few, three to four hours of car washes that are on Quick Quack and all we ask is that they donate to whatever the activity or the team is. And we sponsor local events like that all the time. We do charity work. We think we're pretty awesome. I don't know if you can tell. We try. And that's what you get with a car wash company, not a one-off, a single car wash. There are professional standards of cleanliness, professionalism. When you go, it's friendly and beautiful. And if given the opportunity, we would love to prove that to you. And you can go to any of our sites, other sites here in Utah, and I think you would believe me. Thank you.
I think one last comment too to understand is that within the SC1 zone, we already have a permitted use for a gas station, 24/7 gas station. If you have an incidental use of a car wash with a gas station, as I understand it from reading your code, that's allowable. So that can be placed basically within that permitted use anywhere on that lot so long as it's within 20 feet of the residential space behind it. In this particular orientation, what we're looking at with a conditional use is that we would have the tunnel of the car wash always facing out towards the main street. So this becomes a facing, not only fronting, but also a facing issue. So that basically the whole idea is that any noise from the blowers is going to go out into the road where you've got by decibel level, probably comparable decibel level as the blowers. And we've in-
The traffic.
For the traffic, right. And with the neighborhood that we're currently looking at being the first application of this text amendment in talking with the resident immediately to the south of us, his conversation, his recommendation to us initially when we had our first meetings even before a town hall meeting because we've been meeting with the Perkins fairly regularly and we conversed back and forth either by phone or by email. His whole, his whole point was is he wanted to know how much distance that he would have between him and the actual opening or the exit to the car wash. In this specific lot that we have, it is significant. We're not just talking about 20 feet. We're about, I think it's about 75 or 80 feet actually from where the entrance to the car wash is. So we're over 150 feet away from where the exit is. And that, again, this is text amendment, citywide, we understand it. But we believe that with that kind of conditional use requirement as to the facing nature of the car wash, wherever those car washes automated might be, that will be, I think, not a detriment to the community but a benefit. Also, the second point, and I think is probably equally as important, particularly it was at least for our experience, our immediate experience, is the hours of operation. For a, for example, for a gas station, it's a 24/7 deal. You've got that car wash operating at any time of the night, all points of the night. But in an automated car wash, it is employee-served and those hours of operation are significantly restricted. In Quick Quack's case, it's seven to seven in the winter and seven to nine in the summer. And then it's closed down, doesn't operate anymore until the next morning. So I think that becomes a real benefit and a trade-off. I know to the folks that I've spoken with, that was a real plus for them to know that those hours of operation were as constrained as they are. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Joseph, you're humble and proud of it. I like that you're excited about-
Thank you, Commissioner Pack.
No, and I mentioned to you, Commissioner, that I attended the town hall meeting that Councilmember Burton put on. I was able to meet you, so thank you. Very good. We will reserve some time for you if there's any public comments that you'd like to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, your colleagues have left you.
Scared of leaving away.
They're going to quit for a car wash.
So this is an applicant-driven amendment to the, text amendment to the SC1 zone. And his applicant said what they were proposing is definition is an automated, of an automated car wash be added to the 2009 city code and that an automated car wash be added as a conditional use in the SC1 zone. And up here are five of the SC1 zones, zone areas in the city omitted where the bland landscaping property is because they simply omitted it. But that is an SC1 property also. And so those are the potential areas that could be impacted. All of them are on arterial streets and five of them currently are in developed sites. And as staff, I don't feel that an automated car wash is any more impactful than a permitted gasoline service station is. And so I feel like the uses are very similar and recommend the planning commission for a positive recommendation to the city council.
Well, thank you. Mr. Gardner, if this were to be approved, then we would still see a site plan in conditional use with what we have for each applicant that comes in.
Yeah, with the conditional use, you could establish conditions of approval that would mitigate the detrimental impacts as we talked about. And the site plan approval would allow you to also condition the site plan or the way the building is oriented if you feel like it's going to impact the neighborhood. Now, not all SC1 zones have or immediately adjacent to residential, interesting, this one, this one is. But it also is adjacent to probably the busiest street in the city. Maybe Redwood's busier, I don't know.
And would that go to the design review committee?
Absolutely, yeah. It'd go, any application in the future for an automated car wash in the SC1 zone for the design of the site and the building would go to the DRC and then come to the planning commission also.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gardner? Commissioner Green?
What size is the piece of property? I missed this one. What size is this piece of property? I don't remember.
There's three separate lots and Mr. Burnson, I think it's right under three acres, correct?
It's two, it's 1.93.
Right under two acres.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that if we added the text amendment or the text amendment, that the piece of property would match the SC1 zone. So, or is, because it has to be between 1 and 10 acres, so that's why I was asking that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gardner? Commissioner Green, is there anything else? Okay, no worries. Thank you. I know all these buttons to push. Well, let's open this up to the public. If you have any comments that you would like to mention regarding this item, please feel welcome to come forward.
David McComey, I live on seventy-nine forty-seven South, thirty-eight hundred West. As I was watching on number four, I don't know how Hawaii people, they take knives away from you so you don't slit your wrists, because number five is exactly a point that I was watching. When this made its first trip to the council, it was not a unanimous vote. There was two people voted against it. One of their concerns was, when this was zoned originally, it was agreed there would be no gas stations. Now, I'm not opposed to this car wash, but I'm opposed to the argument, oh, well, a gas station, you know, it could have a car wash, and, you know, and I realize you people weren't there when this is, well, most of you probably weren't, but that's the problem that I see, and I'm really nervous about what was going to be there, because originally they were talking about like a CVS-type pharmacy and a, you know, a food place, maybe a sit-down restaurant or a fast food. The traffic at that intersection is god-awful. It is absolutely terrible. The shooting the other day was a good example. I was about three hours, yeah, just watch the news, you'll see the picture of the house on the corner, but I was about three hours not being able to get in and out of my property easily, and so as this proceeds, I would hope that you guys would keep very careful track of what's happening and realize this may be front-facing, but the residential impact is huge because the, the property east of our, or that subdivision is originally called Western Hills, had four inlet-outlets designed into it. Well, Bangor went through the east side of those, the construction of, the overpass wiped out the east one that was facing seventy-eight, so now you only have an in-only if you want to go west, there's an in-only at thirty-seven twenty-five, and so every, all, everybody in that whole area comes over to thirty-eight hundred. So the amount of traffic there is very large, and I'm concerned, you know, that what's been agreed upon may be an issue. And I'm down to four seconds, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
My name is Rick Perkins. I live at seventy-eight sixty-four South, thirty-eight hundred West. I'm going to be, I'm the fourth house in, so the car wash is going to be, well, I can't say it's going to be right next to me, there's about seventy feet, but they've got to be nice to, to work with, and we did talk to them about the exit was at one point, point in my place, and they turned it toward seventy-eight. Personally, I would rather it just be the, the way it was, but, you know, it's, it's been purchased, things are going forward. As far as the, the car wash, we drove, my wife and I drove down to Orem, parked our vehicle, listened to it. It's a clean facility, seeing if I there really know what they're doing. And, but I guess my, my thing, too, is, is the traffic, what it's going to do with the traffic. So I would just ask that the traffic commissioner, whoever's planning this, this intersection change and what they're going to do with that, that they would, you know, get that thing figured out, because it is a, it is quite a mess. And this is going to add to it, I don't care what anybody says, this is, this is going to add to it. I like the idea the cars are going in and out, and they, quickly, and they, they do have it directed to where they will go to seventy-eight and, and possibly keep a lot of it off thirty-eight, but no matter what happens there, it's going to, it's going to come on thirty-eight. But, you know, that's just expected, and, but anyway, as far as the car wash, too, I kind of look at it as if they're going to put a car wash in that corner, if they put a little birder joint or something like that, or a gas station down the road, you know, they can easily remodel them, and somebody else can come in. But this car wash that we've seen, you know, it's pretty much, it's kind of hard to change one of them around for something else, especially the equipment they're putting in there, and they seem like pretty reputable things, so, anyway, that's just kind of my feeling on it, and thanks for your time.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Commissioner Sikowski, did you have a question for the applicant?
No, I, this would be for Larry, just super quick. Do we have to suspend the rules in order to do that, or just wait for a minute?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, can we, what is the conclusion of the public comment section? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Well, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing section, and please, Commissioner Sikowski, address your, your question.
Thank you. I know that we're only dealing with the text amendment ver- point tonight, but just, this is just more for kind of public comment. With the development of that piece of land, the intersection is going to be developed at the same time, correct?
Yes, the, the development won't be approved without the intersection's improvements of thirty-eight hundred West.
Okay, so, just so you guys know, that's part of it. So tonight, we're really just discussing the text amendment that, that talks about all of the SC one zones in the city, so, but, but that should give you a little bit of peace of mind for that, that travel corridor. We know that's been a big problem for a long time, so.
Thank you, which means specifically there wouldn't be traffic engineering studies now?
Yes, absolutely, and, and when the zone change to SC one came to the commission earlier in the spring, there was a good record created at that time that the need, thirty-eight hundred West is failing quite badly right now, and so there's some needed improvements in this, this commercial development would be the one that would make those improvements on the corridor.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
I think I'm pretty much in favor of this one. I think part of the reason why, but I, but I do, I do want to reiterate, as we talk about conditional use permits for this piece of property, the SC one zone, and I'm going to quote verbatim out of the, the city code, the SC one zone is intended to locate it within a neighborhood, within neighborhood areas and be integrated into the residential structure of the neighborhood that will create a minimum of detriment, hazardous inconvenience to the surrounding residential development. And it's going to be characterized by harmonious groupings and a bunch of other stuff, it's clean, well-lit, and you can read through the rest of the SC zone. I think the interesting thing about this one with the SC zone, and I, and I, I think that you hit it on the, the button, and that's, I think that's what sways me, is that a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away, we used to pull our cars up on the grass, and we'd wash our own car, and you never, you know, or you'd pull down to the other car wash, and you'd use the car wash gun that was high-speed, and you'd waste a ton of water doing that, too, and you never know. And with the advent of all of these other automated car washes, it, it really does become something that serves the neighborhood, and I, and I think that from my perspective, this is, this is a text amendment that is consistent with what we want in an SC one zone, because what we're trying to do is serve neighborhoods, and that we can try, that, that the things have changed in the city to where this is consistent because we want to save water, we want to make things more convenient for people, and the fact of the matter is that you can put a gas station there. I think it's ironic that we could put a gas station on, we could put another Maverick, although there's one down, the far, the street farther down, we could put a Maverick there, we can put a Chevron there with a gas station, but you can't put an automated car wash there. And, and so I think for, for consistency's sake and the change that's occurred in the city, going back to my previous comments, I think on this one, the burden's been met to change the ordinance, because we, we see the change in the way we've done business and the way we've done things, and the way we're doing things, that an automated car wash is almost a necessity so that we, because it may not be sometime in the near future that the city just bans us from washing cars in our front yard anyway, because of the waste of water. So I think from, from my perspective, I, I do believe that this is probably consistent with the SC zone, and because of the changes that we've seen in our demographics, and that's, that's why I'm leaning towards being in favor of this one as opposed to, I was adamantly opposed to the last one.
Well, thank you. And to follow up with your comments, and Commissioner Green, so we're all on the same page with what automated really means, the definition, since that's really what we're striving to change here. To me, I've been to three different types of car washes. There's one, as you mentioned, where you hold the wand, and you gun it, and you're, in a way, some could call that automated, because you turn the dial, and whoo, that's high-tech, that's automated, you know, now it's bubbling, it's open, and oh, now I get the spot for your drinks. But to me, that's, that's manual. And then you get a, a, one that's adjacent to a gas station, as was mentioned, where really it's automated because you're driving through it, and you're not really touching any equipment, and there's pressure plates, but I think what, what we're talking about here, Mr. Gardner, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you don't even have to drive through it, you drive up to it, and then the, the machinery itself pulls your car through.
Yes.
Is that the def- so we're just talking about my third idea there, and if there's a uniformed employee there, I mean, this seems like a much better, well, not, not upper-scale respectable business, instead of just one that's not even monitored, you just put the coins in yourself, I mean, we would have some employees there.
This is a fully one, and, you know, if you watch the QuikQuack video I alluded to earlier, and you'll see that at the beginning of the process, there's an employee in the midpoint, and at the end, and so, no, it is fully staffed, but the, the car, for safety purposes, is pulled through by the machinery and not driven by, and I refer you to the video, is why that doesn't occur.
And that, that is the difference we're discussing tonight to define the word automated, you don't have to drive-
Because if somebody's driving through it, then it's not fully automated.
Okay, good. So are we saying, do we need to define, is that going to be in there, fully automated or just automated? I mean, I know there's some language in that.
The definition of automated car wash, a car wash facility with sufficient automation to independently pull a vehicle through a washing, washing portal without driver interaction, so, and the applicant could probably answer, but, but I think the car has to be in neutral or in park when it goes-
Neutral.
Great, and would you like to come up and address anything that was mentioned by the residents? We always give applicants an opportunity to do that, if you'd like to say anything regarding fronting and facing, or traffic, or fully automated. If there's anything that you'd like to add, we want to make sure we give you that opportunity.
I'll just say one thing, in addition to the one site that we're specifically looking at, is that we are also creating an additional right-in, right-out access to the west, which will be covering the canal. So that's kind of the way we're going to be directing people, they can either come in, make a right turn in at that new road, it's, it's the duplicate of the road across the street in Jordan Landing that you can see runs between the buildings there. This would be on, between us and the medical buildings there. So hopefully, that creates a circular flow that allows people, at least those going east, be able to take advantage of, to hopefully mitigate again that intersection. Also, to go along with the intersection widening, we will be giving up twelve feet of our property to create a new lane of traffic for ingress into the neighborhood, so, hopefully. That answers at least as far as the logistics of that site, and I would suggest that with any site you would be looking at, everything is going to be front-facing and fronting, so both. And again, that would be your option, you're the, you're the people that we bring the conditional request to, so.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Green?
So, just for Mr. Gardner, and, and this is as much for me as the public, when it comes back for a conditional use permit, they will, they'll have to put it on the site plan, and there will be conditions attached with the space and the, can we limit hours of operation there?
Yes, absolutely.
And so, so there, there will be, we can, we can add those condition, I guess that's why it's called a conditional use permit, but we can add those conditions so that it can impact, and we can look at traffic and all those kind of things, to, to minimize the impact, even though that's permitted in this zone.
It's a conditional use of the zone, and so by state law, anything that the planning commission feels like is a detriment can be mitigated, and that is fully within your authority as a planning commission. Now, there's a lot of things you can't, you know, you can't say we want this color orange rather than the yellow on the paint, or, you know, some planning commissions will get off in the weeds, but I know this planning commission won't, so, but just to keep it mitigating detrimental impacts.
Thank you for your confidence, Mr. Gardner. Commissioner Luthy?
I think that this text amendment makes a lot of sense, and I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations you see today, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of zoning ordinance text amendment defining automated car wash and adding automated car wash as a conditional use in the SC one neighborhood shopping center zone and a permitted use in all other commercial zones.
Commissioner Hanson?
Say.
We have a motion from Commissioner Luthy, a second from Commissioner Hanson, any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Welcome to West Jordan, QuikQuack with, what's the mascot name again?
Quaggles.
Quaggles.
And we're honored to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for making a difference in the community, appreciate that. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to mention, as Julie mentioned, next week, we might have three items on our consent calendar, and just a reminder to look over those, if we need to pull one, we can, but it just requires one motion to approve all of those since they're on the consent calendar. And wondering if staff could please ensure that if there are any conditions of approval, could we put that on the front page of any recommended motion? I just noticed that that wasn't there tonight, it might have just been omitted, but that might, might help, so we're not having to go through pages.
So, so you're wanting to see, this is kind of a new format on the staff reports, and I have no problem, you want the conditions-
I know that would be, I know that would be hard to list them all on the page, but maybe you could just say, with-
In the bottom of the motion, you say, but with the nine in this-
Right, with the conditions that are in the staff pack, or, or something like that, just so we don't-
And what we could do, and believe me, we're here to make your job easier, is we could, like, have the signatures on, on the front page of approval, but could do the motion as Commissioner Quinn, he said, with the nine, and then just put the conditions on the very next page, so you're not having to fumble through the report, because I realize when they're trying to talk, and, and, you know, it gets annoying, and I go like thirteen or fifteen inches, and so, yes, that's, no, no, we'll do that.
Thank you. And the last thing is, it, it was brought up in the pre-meeting, what, right as we were starting it, should we have like a ninety-degree rule? You might notice I'm in the official planning commission polo shirt. I was told when we were given these shirts that this was kind of official city representation and uniform. I, I want to ensure that we respect the process, but being in a suit and a tie or a dress and a jacket with it being hot, do we want to, just among ourselves, make sure that we establish just kind of informal, hey, how are we going to dress, that no one feels like they need to dress up, or, ooh, I'm underdressed for the occasion, I know staff needs to be in a tie, is that correct? Is that kind of a-
I think you can direct Scott to tell him no, that I can wear golf shoes on Friday night.
That's, that'd be great, planning practice. I, I mean, not that we need to like make a formal motion, but I just don't want anyone to feel underdressed, overdressed. Does anybody have a thought, a comment, or anything like that?
I think as long as you look professional, then, and that's professional.
I agree with you. I'm just saying, it's like being here to get more casual.
Commissioner Sikowski, do you have?
I just had a quick question for Larry. So there's, tonight, there was lots of discussion about PC zone. Can the planning commission get together and write up what we feel changes could possibly be to the PC zone and then submit that, or is that kind of a conflict of interest within the city?
Uh, no, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, what I would do to be, is if you're going to hold a, a meeting like that, is that you let Julie know so it can be properly announced, because any meeting of a court of the planning commission is an open, open meeting. Not that you'll have any of the public show up, because you won't, but you also have those meetings if you want to hold. Now, I think Julie, can they schedule special meetings when they want, and you can make staff at your disposal, because we are, you're- And you can make staff at your disposal because we are your staff, the planning commission, so, no, I think it's an excellent idea. It would function the same as like if we were discussing the general plan amendment or something like that, but I think we're, there was some very good discussion on the PC zone, and I think as the city, you know, because West Jordan is a pretty high-growth city right now, the pressure's going to get even greater, and it might be good to get out in front of this because things are, and things aren't going to slow down, you know, as far as.
So let's, can I propose that we maybe do a formal meeting where it's a workshop, where we all come in shorts and t-shirts if we want to, and we just hash this out? So maybe let's all read the PC zone requirements, get familiar, real familiar with it over maybe the next like two weeks or so, three weeks, and then maybe when we come back, we could figure out when we can all meet, and let's just fix this.
I have a problem with a Tuesday at 5:30 like we're used to.
I think we might need more than an hour. I think we need some time, but we'll be good.
And Julie, what kind of noticing timeframe do you need if they were to hold a special meeting?
Technically 24 hours, but we do have them.
I think two weeks.
Yeah, I think that's fine, we can do that.
And Board for Food for Thought, July only has one meeting, only 11th.
Oh, great.
But it's not used to the holiday.
Yeah.
We could maybe do one of the later Tuesdays in July, I think, as long as it's not the weekend, or, you know, around, right around the 24th, but.
The 25th.
The 25th would be a Tuesday.
So we missed the 4th.
Independence Day. Just kidding.
You're having a holiday.
So our next meeting would be on the 20th of this month, right? So we could... Is Tuesday at 5:30 amenable to everyone? It seems like we're, just before we define a date, just since we're used to being here on Tuesday, and I know the third Tuesday, we might have a board of adjustment conflict, so, you know, we're looking at like a fourth Tuesday. Oh, fourth is the DRC as well.
I'd say there's more chance of there being a DRC than a board of adjustment.
True. Are there any applications for July for board of adjustment?
Yeah, that's like more than we should talk about now.
That would be July, well.
Are you saying the first? Or are you talking about the second? Oh, so we're there, sorry, I guess I got confused, so we're there on the 25th, we're not there on the 4th.
No, you're only allowed.
You're only meeting on the 11th.
The first, the first meeting is canceled because.
So good, we are talking about the 4th of July, I said.
Fourth of July is, your meeting was moved to be 11th of July.
So we're already meeting on the 11th, you're right, we're already meeting on the 11th, so we'd be looking at like the 18th.
If there's not a DRC.
If there's not a DRC.
The 18th is a work, because that would be a normal meeting for us, I'm not going to meet. No, there might be a reason why city council, or they're, sometimes they have to wait a few weeks or something, certain types of things.
Could we propose potentially the 18th, just tentative week, and then Julie will let us know if that doesn't work? Mm-hmm, at 5:30, does that work for everybody else?
It doesn't hurt. I don't think it would be good. Too many Julie here.
You know, it's not like I say that it's breed that.
Julie, can we just record it on the, would that be easier, or would you prefer it to be physically?
I think we need to have a staff meeting and so, yeah, and one thing I will, before we get to our phone list, I want to make sure with our attorneys that it is within the purview of state law for this company. I don't think there'll be an issue, but.
Well, thank you. Is there an alternate date besides the 18th so that Commissioner Hanson can make it? I guess, not the 25th. What about the 25th?
About three days.
Sure. So Commissioner Quinn is suggesting that our next meeting just come with three Tuesday dates, that might be the best, so that we can get everyone there, including Commissioner Hanson?
How big is our meeting for next time? What if we just tacked it up at the end of that?
Hmm, true.
Um, right now, there's.
A big one?
There's more text amendments, and there's a 1708, 1708 for EDA, planning areas too.
Oh, yeah, it's that one, so we don't want to go with that one, that would be a big one.
And Commissioner Quinn and Commissioner Green said they can't meet here anyway.
Yeah, a bit of advice, if you're going to talk about something very specific, then you don't want to add it after the end of the EDA or something, I think.
Okay, so.
Well, we've had a couple where we're out quickly, so if it was, I mean, if there is something coming up where we've got a short docket, it might not be a bad approach.
Okay, even though, Commissioner Hanson, you're saying you wouldn't be able to make the 18th, but.
No, I will be using that.
Ooh, even better, you have a better offer.
Yeah. I would drive anybody.
So, as you mentioned, you'll tender what you would like to say on that. Okay, so let's move forward with the 18th, depending on Mr. Gardner checking in with the city attorney, make sure he's all right, and Julie making sure that the city council doesn't have a conflict. And Commissioner Luthy, you've been very patient, sorry, what would you like to say?
All I was going to say is I noticed in that market, one, and now let's see if I can pull it up, all of the maps weren't legible. I tried to zoom into them to kind of get a fill when they were talking about walls and different things, and it's not legible. Is there any way we can make sure that when we get these packets that?
Oh, the NIS market? Yeah.
It, it's just, it's no good if you can't read it, so, that was all I was going to say.
And that's, that's something I didn't think about within getting things electronically now, so we might be.
That's one of the perks, is that you can zoom in and really like get a feel for what's going on.
But.
But I think that where we have, we always have everything submitted electronically, and so we might be able to get you guys, you know, the staff report will be the same, it'll still have the same information, but you might have an attachment that's actually the electronic copy.
That would be wonderful.
There's mostly the architect, so you're in there stuff, PDF, and something like that.
We require everything to be submitted electronically anyway, so we're trying hard to stop deforesting the world, but it's not really.
Sure. The other thing on that is that we're still missing some, and I know I'm being ridiculous about this, but we're still missing some north arrows. It would be really nice to be able to orient ourselves as to what we were looking consistently.
Good point.
That's it for me.
Very good, thank you, and thanks to our police officer for being here this evening. What is your name, sir?